All the meeting to order, start with the prayer then the pledge. Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect Church.
That was great. Well, again, just thank you. I thank you for your love and your grace. Lord, we continue to pray for our village. I pray that you give us a direction and guidance. Lord, I pray for our men and women on the council and to serve our city and our village. Lord, continue to give them wisdom and guidance also. We just love you and we just continue to follow you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, want to welcome everybody. Roll call.
Martha?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Present.
Martin?
Here.
Klepper and Bassett are absent.
Land absence?
He had a wisdom tooth, so he's not going to be here. So are we going to be able to do the mer-
What, drain his knowledge?
That's what I thought, yeah.
No, if he doesn't show up, then we can do readings of like the legislation. We won't be able to suspend the rules.
Go across that bridge when we get there.
Yep, that's my-
Okay. First on the agenda is Brock Colburn, Vice President of Whirlers, to speak about upcoming changes. Let me step in. Podium, please.
Good evening. Yeah, as he said, Brock Colburn from Whirler, here today to propose the change to the recycling schedule. I did bring some letters that we had previously sent out to residents. If you want to copy while you talk, you can ask and I'll work with you.
When did these get sent out?
These were when we first took over the contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
So the reason I brought these was just because when we first was awarded the contract for the village, the recycling program was the town was split in half when we serviced you guys. So I brought this because two years after we had started, we had came and voted to change to have the whole town picked up on the same day. Since then, we want to revert back to the way it was originally. I probably brought this. Reason being, it's a good thing the village has been bringing in quite a bit more recycling than they were prior to, 2019. So basically, I mean, the residents are participating more and more, which is good for the village. We're seeing the countries go up. Right now, our truck comes to town, he's putting in 11, 12 hour day, packing out, trying to come drive all the way back to Defiance Dump and come back to the town on that same day. So that's where the problem's coming into play. I'm afraid come winter time, that 11, 12 hour day may become 12, 13 hour days, just with the weather. So I think we'll be changing things back, but I think this would be the best for the village. Service type would not change. I mean, everyone's still getting their every other week service. We're just reverting back to picking up half the town in one week, the following week, alternating back and forth. So if, you know, I just brought the previous letter that we sent out when we first were awarded the contract. The first few pages are just public service and things. But the last two pages, if you focus on those, that's the map and the schedule that we had previously put together for the residents. So again, right now, we're picking up the whole village. I'd like to go back to the yellow and green section, they pick up one week and then the following week, the-
When do you want to start this?
I mean, ideally, as soon as possible for us, but obviously, we want to get the residents notified of this change prior to their approval. So we should be well and working on that for the village on that.
I've only got one question. And this was back from the original, and I think it'll pose another problem. People on the border streets, what they are, say if they couldn't call it like yellow and purple, are they yellow or are they purple?
So I think previously, along with this letter, we should have brought that as well. We actually broke out every street and identified which section you were people in. So we could provide that again, and it broke out the 200 block this week if you're on the north side, things like that. So it made it clear to the residents which section belonged it.
And you're going to send that out to all the residents?
Yeah, that's what we, we can definitely do another letter similar to this one to notify those residents. You know, I didn't know if, putting something into their utility bills or paper, and we'll do whatever avenue you guys feel best.
And you'll include the map in with the-
Yeah, absolutely. I'd do another map. I'd update the schedule of the dates that they would be picked up for recycling. They're all, just to be clear, they're all used to which sections they're in now because of their vault-
Day?
Their vault pickup. You know, we use this current map for vault pickup. So they should be familiar with which section they're in, just based off the vault. So I don't think there'll be too many questions as far as which section they fall into.
I don't think, once-
Go ahead.
Go ahead. One section's going to miss a pickup, correct?
So what we do is everyone gets picked up all together right now, and then, so we pick everyone up one week, and then start it, so-
Somebody will be two weeks in a row.
Some, yeah, one of the sections will be two weeks in a row. So no one's going longer than their every other week service right now.
Okay.
I don't see a problem with it.
No. Any other questions, Mr. Colburn, or I don't think we have to vote it. It's just information, right? The contract's not changing.
Yeah, they didn't change the contract.
So it's just information, so-
It'll be picked up the same number of times.
We're going to have a couple of weeks to get the information out through the utility bill, and then, I don't know if you're still thinking about sending a letter.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I'm more than willing to. If you guys think they can fill the bill and the papers good enough, then save a little bit of paper or not, do them, but I'm more than willing to do them too.
I recommend a full page add in the local paper, maybe the county paper.
Be nice.
Is that where you have the-
You know, a colored map would be nicer. There's more information.
The only thing for utility bill, I just printed bills this morning, so they'll be gone out end of this week. That's what might happen to the bill though.
Yeah. So if you send them out, it'd probably be better.
Maybe the first week of September or something?
I mean, I'm willing to do whatever at this point.
July bills just went out, so-
So yeah, we gotta wait until-
And by the time that we get everybody notified?
Yeah, we just had to pick a date, obviously, you know, we're every other week right now, but I'm not sure what date that falls on. Maybe the second week of September, September 1st or something like that, but yeah.
Yeah, well, September 1st is Wednesday.
Definitely look at into September.
Well, you guys probably, that's-
I know, we got-
Labor day weekend, but yeah, you're right.
So it'd be a day after. Wow.
If they started it there, it would just be the next week.
Could do the third week, let everybody get over the holidays and everything else, give them time-
Yeah, I would think any time-
Back to normal.
Anytime in September.
What would that sound like to you, Brock, the third week?
Yeah, and that's totally fine, because any week works for us. So, yeah, I mean, I, again, I think it's a good thing, getting the tonnage of town more cardboard than anything really. So I think that's what's packing us out.
Amazon box. I think the service, the service Whirlers doing, doing-
I've had no complaints every day.
So we appreciate-
Yes, you get to-
That's my opinion anyway, so. Okay, any other questions for Brock? We got a date set. I guess you go ahead.
Third week of September, you're thinking that here?
And you're going to be in charge of all notification, right?
I mean, I can do the letter and work with-
Say if you want to talk with John and the utility office, you might have some ideas.
Okay.
She'll put down the website, too.
Well, we have to, we have to appoint somebody in charge, and you look like the guy.
Well, I can truly do the letters and relay the information to-
To Dawn, yeah. That'd be great.
The more information, the better.
Yeah. We'll put something together and send it to Dawn, make sure it looks good to her. Get it done.
That'd be great. Appreciate it, Brock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Next is approval of the regular council meeting minutes, July 6th. Any additions or corrections? If I see anything that needs to be changed.
I don't know, Travis is taking my area.
I don't entertain a motion. Motion to approve the minutes? I'll second. Second. Roll call.
Martha?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Before you approve of the bills, any questions? Comments?
Got a question about the Premier Bank, the bank fees. Is that just for accounts or what is that for?
Yes, and it keeps creeping up.
Okay.
We have a new contract coming up, January 1st.
Then, in regards to the well field, the Jones and Henry, is that, their design is pretty much is complete, right? So what are we-
Still waiting for Mummy Dally to sign off on all the, sign off on all the environmental stuff, and we'll get people working state at some point.
So Jones, the Jones and Henry invoicing at this point is basically just management?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Pay the bills.
Got a second?
Bills. Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martha?
I'm staying.
Beverly?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is notice of public hearing, Thursday, August the 5th, at 6:00 PM, the zoning office, 108, 108 North Main, lot split, 330 Musargon. So that's August the 5th. Boarding Commission, Park Board. Taylor, if you want to give the information on-
I noticed you, but am I the Park Board liaison? I thought that was you.
I am.
Yeah, anyways, I can run with this, I guess. So I was approached by Little League Ball Association. They would like to get a fourth field added up by the park. I think you guys have the diagrams in there. Talked about a couple of different things. The goal is the Pony League, to get the Pony League out there, obviously combining all the HBA or bring, the previous conversation's event, to bring the Pony League with under the HBA umbrella, getting everything moved up there. In a perfect world, what they would like to do is convert Field 6 into a Pony League field, shifting that fence out closer to the, would be the sledding hill for all intents and purposes, and then building a Little League field at the proper distance. They're looking at, and there's a couple of other things, obviously, the one being there's a local business that would like to get a larger playground, fully donated up there, and then they'd like to see the batting cages moved and kind of reworked in between Field Fives and Field Sevens. They've got some preliminary numbers in regards to constructing the new field and getting the concrete completed around Field 6, but they don't necessarily have all of the funds to get Field 6's fence moved, and because there's a little bit of dirt work that needs to happen as part of that, so everything still drains well. So they were looking to see if the village would be interested in committing some dollars towards this project. Projects.
Yeah, the only thing, that's why I was just coming back, did anybody have to share a view of the EPA response to them moving that fence closer to the well field?
Yes, and they said there's no problem moving that fence. There's a letter from the, from the Ohio EPA. Because of the depth of the fence only being three foot, it's just post, they said there's an issue, obviously, with herbicides, spraying for weeds.
Yeah.
But as long as the, you're not shedding, pushing water towards the wellhead, the, and you're only putting the post three foot into the ground, there's no issue. That was from, her name was Bridgette, it's with Ohio EPA.
What kind of dollars are they asking?
Preliminary numbers, it was between $5,000 and $10,000 to get that fence moved, and they think they can repurpose if the-
Is that replacing the fence or using-
That's reusing some of the fence that they have, and then ultimately, the goal would be set up within the ball association's leases, which I don't think we have a current one on file, the existing Pony League field is part of the, is part of the Pony League HBA, or I guess not HBA, but the Pony League usage. So then that could go towards softball, and then softball would then have another field closer to their concession stand. But it was between $5,000 and $10,000. That's just kind of, they've gotten a couple estimates.
And what's the timeline, do you know, Taylor?
They would like to get it done as soon as possible, so obviously-
They could put it in for next year's budget. You're on the finance committee, but if they need it sooner, then we'll have the-
They'd like to be able to get everything seeded this fall, so then they could use the fields in the spring.
Park Board-
Usually this would probably go through, I'm just saying, Park Board first, and then, you know, kind of get their blessing and ideas and comments, and then, you know, committee, that's why we have a Park Board here, these kind of ideas for park improvements, and what they're doing is all really good improvements, but if there's any issues, I mean, like I said, with administration and wellfield issues, or well pump issues, or anything else that's going to bump up to fencing on the backside of the building right there, our maintenance building. The other thing I thought of, too, is getting, that fence is getting pushed out farther towards the sledding hill, and that sledding hill is used in the wintertime. Is there a liability issue then? I mean, kids use the sledding hill for sledding.
Well, the way this looks, it looks like it's far enough from the hill.
Wellhead, you'd, I mean-
You're pretty far away.
Yeah.
Do we know what the extension, Mike, is it 10 feet, 15, 20?
Right now, it's regulation. I think that right now, that field's regulation Little League, so it's 180.
To the fence?
It's 180, I think it's 180 or 185, and then the Pony League field is 260. 260, yeah, I think it's 260.
So it's about 80 foot.
Something else, though, to consider, last time we worked on that well, that this is going to be inching towards, they have to take the fence around it down, so is there going to be a maintenance issue now with the baseball fence being in the way of looking on the wall?
So the-
I just don't want to create a problem with our wellfield water plant by expanding, just because everybody wants a field.
And it's hard to say what we may end up with by the time we bring raw, raw water back in from our new wellfield. We may have to update the process.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of this. I know you keep looking at me, I'm so against this for so many reasons.
Can you elaborate?
There's another field that could be expanded the opposite direction and not come anywhere near the wellfield. The well field, I mean, that's our, that's 50% of our public drinking water, is that well, that one well. And it's the only one working at full capacity right now. And while our park department personnel know the areas they can and cannot spray herbicides in the park and abide by it, the HBA does not. And there's been evidence of it every spring and summer and fall. So now you're going to bring that fence within 10 feet of my well field, so within 15 to 18 feet of the wellhead itself. The same people who are breaking my protection zone now, what's going to stop them from breaking my protection zone then? And like I said, there's other options. There's another field that can go the opposite direction and not impact-
Here's parking, that's the big issue.
Anything that's in actual utility for this village.
They would have to have like-
And I'm all for use of sorts, I think everyone knows that. I'm not down on baseball. I'm not down on softball getting an extra field out of this field. I'm down on it getting close to the well, that's 50% of our drinking water right now. And we don't know when we're going to have another wellfield.
Did they measure this to the parking lot on this field, Taylor?
I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I mean- If you use a ruler and go basic engineering, there's room. I'm not an engineer.
Are you talking Field 5?
I don't know their numbers.
You're talking to Field 5 parking lot. This is 5, right here.
Sorry, Bill.
5, 6, 7, right, 5.
Yeah, this one's right here. The batting cage is already in need of repair, and they already want to rework that, so that shouldn't be an issue. And if you use a ruler, okay?
Where's the well's at?
Doing this 80-foot extension or whatever that is.
This is the one-
There should be plenty of room here, and it's not going to impact the parking lot. All you do is put a taller fence and put a yellow stripe and the home run, four foot line, whatever that is, and you're nowhere near the well.
I mean, it's something we can look into.
You will end up, you will end up eight feet from that fence, it's eight feet from that fence to the wellhead.
Because I do know it's quite a bit of difference from there, walking distance from there to there. I wonder if we can measure and check into it, see if there's a chance to put it to this field?
Taylor, don't they, they have a kind of, maybe a plan B, don't they, for a Pony League field, to put it in that, the current empty field?
I don't think it'll, it's going to impact those trees.
Yeah, we, I know I had spoke with, an individual came to the office, and that was also a potential plan, if this one didn't go through.
To put a higher fence and not go-
It'd be a higher fence to make up the, the distance.
Correct, and that was one of the things that was talked about, and it's one of those deals where it's not, it's not your standard. It's not the standards, you can obviously accommodate it. So if you could get the field, the full distance on a regulation field, then that would be preferred, but if not, then that isn't the ultimate option.
I think it's a good idea to move the Pony League field and give the other one to the girls.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but they've talked about four fields up there for a long time, and they've talked about soccer fields up there for a long time and different things, but, you know, this is something that's been addressed years ago with having four fields contained in that same area for, for Little League and stuff, so, you know, just my, speaking myself, I mean, I think it's kind of a cool idea, and a novice idea, it's just kind of putting everything together, and, you know, you got somebody wanting to put in a beautiful, you know, playground and add an extra field, I think it's a good idea, so, just logistics.
But I think it's good, brought to the table, so it isn't after the fact, so.
Did you, did you walk it, Taylor?
I have not been out there to pull the distance, pull the tape on it yet.
There's some catch bases and stuff out there, too, so-
Yeah, there is, right, around there.
Three needed of that.
Oh, out here, yeah.
The corner, when they had flags out there, the corner, the left field corner, is going to be right by the new-
If Field 6 would-
Turning, yes, turning that field into the Pony League distance is going to put the left field corner post right by that catch base. And then other catch basin that's further up would be where that new field is going. And I didn't see flags for that, but just using that aerial, I think the catch basin's going to be in the field.
I think the catch basin is, is closer to the hill, if I recall. It's closer to-
They have that swelling right around in here.
Yeah.
Is that where the dirt work needs done, is over by the hill?
The-
Right here's where the dirt work is done.
There's dirt work, there would be dirt work associated with both fields, so if, in this scenario, there's both.
Goes right behind that building.
So you're going to maintain that soil, and you just need to continue the soil.
Essentially.
Fill that and go over.
Essentially.
Okay. Any other comments? This is kind of on hold right now, just- Can we check into this?
Yeah, it's, I mean, obviously, something like that, they can't go forward without everybody's blessing, so-
Right.
Just something that, they'd like, obviously, understanding, like to get started and be able to seed it this fall, so it's be able, so it's able to be used this spring.
Why, they can be worked out. Yeah, if anything, they could probably go ahead and start on this field, can't they?
Well, they don't want to have two mobilizations with, if they can go, if they can extend Field 6, they don't want two mobilizations, obviously, costs and everything goes up in that scenario.
Okay.
So I guess, what are our next steps? And that's something, obviously, we've gone back and forth about what the Park Board's responsibility is, and obviously, we're talking about substantial infrastructure improvements at this point.
I think we need to find out exactly with the tape, exactly where that thing's going to lay, to appease her, and if we can't appease her, then we need to look at another plan.
Yeah, check, check to see what this would end up being.
We just, we cannot jeopardize our only well.
Oh, correct, I'm, yeah, 100%.
And I know you agree with that, I just, but I think we need to take whatever steps is necessary to make sure we're not going to infringe on her wellfields, and in any additional work that comes up that we, we aren't aware of as we put in our new wellfields on the other side of the tracks and bring our raw water back. It's hard to say what the EPA is going to make us do once it reaches the plan again, so, that's my two cents.
Let's go back.
So, just so I'm clear, does the Water Department have ultimate authority, like deciding authority on whether that field can move, or?
I, I think they should, with, with, you know, if she says, hey, you're going to be eight feet from my wellhead, then I think we should take her word on it. They certainly don't want to take mine-
Council's call with input-
Difference on that, difference in the-
I mean, it would be silly for you guys not to take into consideration.
It would be foolish not to listen to her.
Correct. But it's ultimately the council.
Yeah, yeah. But I'd like to see the times that-
So is that something, you want to get a stakeout and we have a council field trip, or?
I'm down for that.
Council field trip.
So picnic, too?
Maybe, 100%.
Cooler?
Get the concession stand open, I don't know.
No coolers there.
I think we should try to mark- Why do you want to ruin it? Mark both. Mark, mark both, though, to see where they're going to end up.
Does all of council want to be a part of that?
Say the whole council, or maybe a committee, you know, three, and then they could, I don't know what committee, that'd be good.
Since they have a part, and I thought, I don't know, I think I told-
Street light.
Is there any way to pull that center of that?
I think water sewers, since it's near there.
Towards the center of the, the middle part, pull it back away so you get more distance for the outfield. You'd have to move the backstop and everything else, but, you know, you're wanting to put a bigger field in that, that footprint, and they have important cement in that area on either side of that field.
Oh, okay, I see.
Bring it back, I mean, you're rebuilding the entire field.
Yeah, with that, you'd have to, you'd be cutting it all new.
Then you're running to the power poles, light poles are there, too.
Yeah, your lighting. It's, I mean, it's obviously, at this point, I don't have anything on the table, but-
Isn't it, wouldn't just build the new field to like Pony League, or is that what you guys were suggesting?
Yeah, well, if you look at the map, the new field, they can't really build it-
They can't, that big, that long.
Yeah, there's an option to make the fence higher, but then, obviously, your fence cost goes up.
Yeah.
And then you've also got, it's just not, it's not regulation. So there, there is a way to get a Pony League built up there still, but-
Instead of having the whole council, I'll just have water and sewer, you know, I'll just have the council give the recommendation and go from there.
Okay.
Easier to get a committee together than having a special meeting and- Okay. All right. Got a plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Coordinate.
We had an opening on the Park Board, and I recommend that Mike Felana fill the vacancy on the Park Board. Make a motion, accept the mayor's request. Any discussion at all?
Related to Park Board, but do we ever get that clarified as far as what the responsibility of that is?
I did talk to Lindsay, it was kind of misunderstanding what she wrote, so.
Okay.
First of all.
Wanted to be clear.
Yeah, absolutely. We had a first, second roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Committee report, street light property, met July 6th. Questions on that? Any questions? Any questions at all, elect committee?
Are we gonna, this is, might be a Troy question. Are we going to have to write that into the sale because of proximity to wellfield? That, I mean, people can't use certain things within the...
The advertising should include it, for sure.
Is that... But is, I guess, is that, that's a question, is that, is that taken into consideration? Are there gonna be restrictions?
We only need restrictions if it is sold as farm property.
Well, but you don't know what it's gonna, I mean, that's the problem is, I mean...
No, but he, he had indicated that he was gonna write this whole thing up, including all that.
Right.
And...
I mean, it can easily say if intend to farm, there's restrictions related to what can be used on the land.
Yes.
Which may deter a farmer.
How is that, and this is maybe not, not the platform to discuss that, but like, how is that different than yard treatment?
You would have to, it's outside the region. The planted lots are the edge of the 300-foot protection.
Right.
The planted lots weren't gonna fall under any...
Got it.
We excluded them from all EPA plans and designed a well field, assuming in case those were sold off.
Okay.
So, our buffer zone is fine outside of those already planted lots.
I need to inform the auctioneer of that, then, because he was still thinking that it was...
I think you told him, man, that is clean.
Did you? Well, his mind's not right.
Is that the old one?
Okay.
You still wanna tell him not to spray.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But we're not required to, it's outside the buffer zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's more for the sewer, right, than the water, my understanding, EPA guidelines? For the sewer out there, there's not gonna be a sewer at the wellfield. Is that right?
There will not be a sewer at the wellfield.
No, but that's what the EPA ruling was for sewers, not so much water. Remember that letter you sent me?
We can't have a sewer within that buffer zone.
Right.
But that also includes pesticides, herbicide, there's a list of things that have to be outside that buffer zone.
You said that's 300-foot?
Yes.
And that's from the center of the well or the outside of the well?
Outside the well casing.
Okay.
We got plenty of room.
Yes, redesign it that way, just in case we did something wrong.
Any other questions? Good job.
Do we... Oh, no, that's his job. Yep. We'll get there.
Okay, Police Fire EMS Committee Meeting met July 14th.
Yeah, we met and, uh, her chief betting's reputation, he thought Sierra Moran, Moran was the best qualified for the job, and through her resume, everything looked really good on her. So, her, the chief, we send it to you, mayor for education.
I talked to the chief a little bit today about it, so I'm satisfied. So, I recommend that they hire Sierra Morant.
Moran.
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 Okay.
I support the judge, the manager's opinion.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Marth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Okay, Charlie, the ordinance committee, I just have him about the road cut ordinance changes, I suggest bringing the council, we can decide.
So, there's a couple of things we need to add to the ordinance. The first thing, which is on the bond sheet that they sign when they give the $1,500, it does specify that they need to put a stone base down with asphalt, no cold patch. But I think we need to get that in an ordinance, so it's written down there as well. That's my opinion, does anyone have an issue with that? And then, the only other questions I had was, we were talking about putting a time limit in to get the roads fixed. Does there need to be a time for what they, the work they did to settle it all? Or is it pretty much once they do the work and then, because I'd hate for a dip to come in?
Right.
You put compaction, I mean, if you put compaction requirements where it's to be compacted every 12 and 12-inch lifts, then you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to wait, you know, three months or whatever.
Because the only way you can prove compaction is if it's tested.
Yeah.
So, it would be a timeline for...
So, can't add some really good insight about that, you, you were talking about when asphalt plants are open and when they close, so like, if they do a cut in the winter, they can't really be taken care of till spring?
Correct.
Is that true? I don't know much about it, so I'm kinda, so...
Yeah, so if you give them eight weeks, well, if it's right where it refers, they're not gonna be open.
But you were saying, I think they close in November to...
Depends on the weather.
Weather has a lot to do with it.
Thanksgiving, they're...
Would you, would you allow a concrete slurry fill on a winter job?
You'd have to come back, rip it out then and put it in asphalt.
Right.
Which means you'll probably have to up your bond.
But that's, that's, you're not gonna eat up your plows and stuff.
No, that's, that's up to you guys, it's gonna add to everybody's cost. That's why I would up the bond. Cut obvious use, meaning say I do it on our street, if I can dig root steves, I can put that cement over it as a temporary, you know, and forget it, keep my bond, it's only 1,500 bucks. But you're not gonna come dig that out in asphalt for 1,500 bucks. So, if you do that, I'd up the bond. And you can word it how you want. I was in the vines today and they cut across Perry Street and concrete in it.
I think you could probably go with a, you could write it in that if there's a curb, you could put like your time limit on it, whatever that timeline is determined to be. And then if it's within winter months, you specify that, you know, if you're not able to get asphalt within X amount of times, expected that you're putting concrete slurry in, and once weather breaks or if asphalt plants open, then it's to be paved.
Yeah, if it was worded like that...
I think you can word it that way.
That would cover what Ken's indicating.
And then just up your bond across the board, your bond requirements.
Is it one Brian Street and fix shifts at the line?
Yeah.
The draw is on?
Yeah, you got, you're gonna lose a tire in there.
With Rick, so whenever...
Somebody had put stone in it at one point, but now it's, it's since migrated.
They were originally supposed to asphalt it last Friday.
Okay.
But it rained, so they haven't given me a, a date yet.
Okay.
So, what's the consensus? Up the bond to what? In the time?
What is it now? It's 1,500 for a road cut or a curb cut.
If they get it fixed, they get it back.
Right. That's a lot of money for Joe Blow to have to, I mean, if, if a guy's in a position where he has to replace his whole sewer, and then he's gotta come up with an additional $1,500 to bond himself, I, I hate to price somebody as poor as me out of, out of having a sewer.
Okay, what are the thoughts?
I kinda agree with Ron, really. I'm just thinking, me, if I had to dig High Street up.
Yeah, you know, it's one thing to know...
You can, you can tell us, keep your bond, that we're paying paid, if you want the taxpayer to pay them for, for you.
Like the mowing.
It's not so much as, as, as the, uh, whether the bond is kept or not, it's, it's the coming up with it.
Right.
If you, if you already figured, if that guy come up and, and if, if you were digging, Larry's up there on High Street, and the guy's going, you're gonna, you're gonna have 2,000, 2,500 bucks in it to get across there, plus you gotta come up with another 1,500 bucks to let sit there with the village until they decide what's gonna happen.
Well, it'll sit with the village until they fix it.
But you, you don't have it. You had to get it someplace and take it and give it to them.
I do understand that, but that's incentive to get it.
So, you got, you rich people sit on that side, but we're over here where we have to deal with this.
Now, wait a minute.
Okay, what do you wanna do? We can decide tonight, consensus, or I guess maybe the committee should?
Yeah, we can have a committee meeting, and that way we can get everything worded the way we want it and make a decision on how we're gonna do it.
I told Charlie, just break it, we can make a decision, but...
I think it would, I think it would make sense to get, basically get your wording put together for an ordinance, and then come up with this, figure out what is gonna, what's the average cost to cut all the way across the street to fill with?
I agree with everything you're doing, Charlie.
I know what you're saying.
But, but it's, it's that jack and that 15.
Right.
And I think if you can get a, well, if you can get a number for basically what, what that patch costs, do you, was that shared with you on this one? Do you know? Do you know that offhand, Kent, with, with working with Durkin?
Well, they'd be more, just because they're union league.
Yeah.
You'd have to talk with them for somebody.
Yeah.
I can't, it's been quite a few years ago, somebody told me just keep their bond and we paid them, too. If, and I don't remember what it was, the prices have changed.
So, it might be worth trying to figure out what that, what that street patch is gonna cost, and then take a look at that.
I, Taylor, I can get an idea. I got somebody supposed to be meeting tomorrow for a bunch of milling and patching here in town.
Okay.
So...
So, it'd be simple.
I can run him past that.
Run him past that. So, what's, what's ballpark cost on that, on?
Just so, and so they're aware that it's an individual patch, it's not a bunch of different patches. Because this is the first one this year, and there was none in 2019.
Don't remember refunding anybody the past two years.
So, it's rare, it's just not written down anywhere of how we want it to be.
Timeline or whatever.
Yeah, I think everything recently has been bored.
And now we have that issue on Brian Street.
We're bored under.
Does that apply just to side streets or even state routes? I mean, is that still our jurisdiction to go across state routes in the community?
I don't know. So, just like if Larry would end up having to go across, and he's on hook for that. And that's gonna cost more than doing our side street.
It's gonna be on the rich side.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Got your homework ready to go?
Thank you, everybody.
Across the state.
Not within.
Okay, next Administrator's report.
Um, that's pretty much what I got there. I have an update of what's been going on. Anybody have any questions for me?
Do we have an update on, so what's remaining with High Street?
I always still gotta walk through that we need to do with, with Ho and Brink. I know they still gotta go and fix the berms.
Do they still have more sewer to put in?
Yeah, they still gotta do from Chicago to Calacasa. They still gotta finish the water line. She's taking a second set of samples tomorrow. If passes, they're planning to do pressure tests Thursday, and then they can start switching services over.
So, when this is done?
They got a month and a half left.
No, their contract for the water is done August 1st, so they're gonna be hustling and hope that pressure test pass, because I don't think we need to extend the contract for that.
No.
The water line, the sewer they've got till October 1st, but I...
Yeah, but I mean, between the two things, whatever it takes to get him done out there, you got a month and a half worth of work.
Yep.
So, what needs to be done from Chicago to the?
Storm line, yeah.
Storm line, okay. I didn't, I didn't realize yet, it's a...
It's done on the same side of the road as the water line?
On the police station, so it's...
The same, it's the same side as water line?
So, it's a storm line, so the water.
Not crossing the street, shut down.
Right. So, they can maintain traffic just like this last?
They'll probably have the traffic.
Okay, storm.
Is my guess, but I don't think so.
Any other questions for the Administrator?
Tomorrow, they're supposed to be fixing all the berms down Chicago Avenue.
When they were gonna start on the sewer after the water line.
And then, is there, is, what is paved now from the water line? That's, they're done with that? That's their...
We got a punch list we're gonna do Thursday, they're supposed to be coming to town. There are some things that didn't get paved first time around, there are some changes they're gonna have to make, the things they did pave.
Okay.
Some of those cut across on Chicago, they're gonna have to take them out, redo them.
Will they raise the manhole lids to...
Well, they're gonna have to get them working.
Street level.
Well, yeah, some of them need raised, but all of them need be able to open. We were chiseling that one the other day across from you, and look how long that took.
We got a phone book.
So, is this, they're gonna have a lot of, of this stuff to...
So, there's, there's still gonna be some paving areas that are addressed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, should be.
Has he, has he give you a price, or is he gonna have a price for you Thursday for Catholic Church?
He won't be anything, so I told Cory if you could get somebody else coming in and have them look at it, and hire you waiting. And they wouldn't have been coming till they're paving the water job anyway, so...
Yeah, I don't care who does it, as long as we, as long as we do it.
Okay, any other questions for the Administrator?
Are they coming out tomorrow on High Street, so we could tell them?
Uh, not that I know of, Chicago Avenue tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
That's a personal issue.
At the end of the day, many... I think they're gonna have to be calling there, you know, and get it through up here.
Yep, they'll be up here. We'll get it handled.
Okay, Troy, you're up.
Oh, no, 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 you forgot me. I put that packet to me and, uh, water sewer, Eric was not able to be there, but...
Sorry.
We did kinda had an informal meeting with the county commissioners last Wednesday. Met with all three of them, I know Mick's been here a couple of times, talking about the Gordon Creek project, uh, industrial drive area, but they were gracious enough to meet with me, Ron, and they came over and had a quick sit-down with them, talking about what their plans were, if they had any further ideas on what they wanna do with Gordon Creek. They're not finalized with anything yet, they're still looking at some numbers. They had their sanitary, a guy there from the county, but it was a nice meeting, about an hour, hour and a half, we talked to them, if it was gonna help improve our industrial drive project at all, we definitely wanna take advantage of that when we do that project and or hint it around, maybe if they were gracious enough to spend some more money our direction, help us with that project, but, you know, we put it on the table. Pretty much a decent meeting, nothing major, going out, just sit down with them and talk about their project.[1578.56] their project. They're supposed to get some numbers from their side, with their engineers and finalize their plans, and then let us know which direction they're going to go. So, but I wanted to thank Ron and Kent for driving over and meeting with them and going from there, but that's...
Okay, that's what you're just handling now. Okay, any questions? Had a chance to look it over? Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? Okay, solicitor, Troy?
First thing I have is ordinance 2021-10, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
What are we?
It's the annual, from general fund to police pension and capital projects. It's in the budget.
Okay, capital projects for, what, what capital projects do we have?
We put the money in there to hold it for projects so that it doesn't get spent on anything else.
Okay. So it's not capital improvements for the police station?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Parth?
Yes?
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Second, third reading, the ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
It's a move for second.
Second.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Next is resolution 2021-09, second reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to rehire Troy Essex as village solicitor for the village of Hicksville.
We'll discuss this in the meeting.
A few of them are just drinking, so.
Resolution 2021-10, a first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to sell lots 57 through 105, 110, and 112 through 115, a Clearview subdivision extension number one to the village of Hicksville and declaring an emergency. That's the first step in proceeding.
I move we suspend the rule.
Second.
So this is just to basically say?
Say that we're going to sell it.
We're going to sell it.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
This will give us the opportunity to go ahead and get some dates set and get the advertising rolling and... Roll call.
I have a question first. On your title, it sounds odd to me.
It does. It says like we're selling it to the village. It's Clearview subdivision extension number one to the village. That's the legal description.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's in there that way.
Okay.
I, I thought the same thing when I read it, too.
Okay, who's first?
Ron suspended the rules, and I seconded.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
So second, third readings are resolution 2021-10 by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to sell lots 57 through 105, 110, and 112 through 115 of Clearview subdivision extension number one to the village of Hicksville and declaring an emergency.
It's a move.
Second. Roll call.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Next is resolution 2021-11, a first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Bruce Guilford Real Estate and Auctioneering to sell lots 57 through 105, 110, and 112 through 115 of Clearview subdivision, number one, at public auction and declaring an emergency.
This is basically just authorizing the contract?
I move we suspend it.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote on it?
I have a quick question on the contract.
Yeah.
So he's got in here a 3.5% commission. Is that all the commission we have to pay if he sells?
That's all the commission we pay to him. Any, any advertising, any, anything that we pay?
That'd be on top of the commission, the advertising.
I just thought that was awful, though. I didn't know there was other things.
You had, you had a con artist working on him for a week. And I appreciate it, Ron.
Yeah, so we're, we're suspended. The rules are?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Parth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third readings are resolution 2021-11 by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Bruce Guilford Real Estate and Auctioneering to sell lots 57 through 105, 110, and 112 through 115 of Clearview subdivision number one at public auction and declaring an emergency.
I have a question, solicitor.
Mm-hmm.
Now that this is passed.
Well, you got to vote on it.
And, huh?
You got to vote on it.
Right, but well, well, let's vote on it, and then I'll ask you.
Maybe she answers before we vote. Okay. Roll call.
Well, it's a move.
I need a first and second first.
Second. Okay.
Larry, first.
Now roll call.
Okay. Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Parth? Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes, uh, I'll go back and speak with, with the auctioneer, let him know that it's a definite go. He will want to assign a date. Now, do, do you all want, when he says, okay, I'd like to do it on, and I'm just saying, I want to do it on September 15th, do you all want me to come back and tell you that, or do you want me to just tell him to set it up?
I'm okay with what he's doing.
Well, do we need a timeline to advertise?
Five, five consecutive weeks, it's got to be advertised?
Yeah.
In the local?
Yeah.
At least in the local paper, I presume he's going to advertise more than that, but...
Yes, yes.
Do, is, is there a discussion on reserves and all that stuff? Have you guys already had that?
No.
Or is, is there going to be a reserve placed on it?
Well, I think we, I, I, no.
We could. I will say the way the law works is they have the right to reject any and all bids, no different than if you did it at a public auction, or you did it where people submitted bids. The statute authorizes the village to accept and or reject all bids.
So if it ever got to that.
That in effect would allow you to set a reserve, because you could say if it doesn't bring more than this amount, we're going to reject all the bids, basically. But that's, that's up to the council, but it is.
Probably wouldn't be wise to reject them.
Well, unless, unless it's somebody stealing it.
Right, and get it for a dollar. Oh, I can't bet on it.
But, yeah, I mean, I will, I will let everybody know what's going on, especially, I'll get right back with him, and then he can, he's allowed to talk to so many, and I can talk to so many, and so we can get the word back without having an official meeting.
So basically, you're saying September would be the auction after five weeks, right?
I mean, it has to be at least five weeks, so whatever after that.
So are you providing the legal language as far as, from an advertising standpoint that says, or?
I'd like to see it, but I wasn't prepared.
He will put it in contract and be presented to you. As soon as he puts it in contract, it'll be either, I'll be...
I'd like, I'd like your approval on the easement discussion and all that stuff, so...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
I think if I can, if I can, yeah, be granted permission to, to tell him, yes, that date's fine, then the rest of it goes through the solicitor, then we're good to go.
Yeah, he knows, would be good date.
Sure, sure.
Where are we at? Uh, we're done with the resolution 2021-11, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the next one, Troy?
Um, is resolution 2021-12, a first reading by caption only, a resolution approving and ratifying the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Blessed Capital LLC and declaring an emergency. I think what this is, when Erica was here that last time, when, whatever, a couple meetings ago, and she brought that in, and it was kind of a whirlwind, and we approved it all, and then Cheryl and I got to talking, and I remembered that on the commercial, so for future knowledge, on the commercial CRAs requires a resolution to approve it, because there's some element of negotiation that's possible in there on the commercial ones. On the residential ones, it's all set in stone. If you apply and you get approved, you get X percent for how many ever years, and so the committee themselves can just approve and or, I guess, it could disapprove one. But on the commercial ones, the state needs to have a resolution on file that it's been approved. We already, by voice vote, approved it, and this is basically just ratifying it and having the resolution so that they get it down to the state.
Is this the company that's just going to drive the?
No, no, no. This is?
This is the?
Collins and Haver.
Oh, okay.
The building down there.
That one's not technically in the village?
Yeah, that one.
What you're referring to.
Right, but we still have, I've asked, I've asked the commissioners, I've asked some people out there, is that going to bring the stench to Hicksville? And everybody's like, I don't know. I really think that's something we should know. As a community, we should know that.
Question is, is there anything we can do about it?
But.
It's a move.
Yeah.
You're going to suspend the rules?
Yes, or suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
Beverly? We're suspending the rules.
Yeah, let's do that.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third reading, a resolution 2021-12 by caption only, a resolution approving and ratifying the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Blessed Capital LLC and declaring an emergency.
So move, second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
And last legislation I have is resolution 2021-13, first reading by caption only, a resolution authorizing the establishment of a special revenue fund for deposit of funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and declaring an emergency. Obviously, these funds are, I think, came in, and you got to have a special fund established to put them in, because that way you can track what they were spent on and where they all went for purposes of compliance over the government.
Make a motion to suspend the rules. Second. Second. Roll call.
Parth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
So second, third readings of resolution 2021-13 by caption only, a resolution authorizing the establishment of a special revenue fund for deposit of funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Any other thing I have? I think Cory, didn't you mention you wanted an executive session about something?
Yeah, but before we go to that, I got something else.
Yeah, yeah, but I was going to, for potential litigation involving our grease dish, I don't know if that's what you're thinking, but our grease issue in the sewer, I'd like to talk about that as executive session.
Okay.
Yep. I don't know if that's...
Scott? Any questions for Scott?
Any lucky recipient township?
Yes, I got to talk to Cory after.
Park tractor, Val?
Well, we've been pretty busy down to the park this last week. We did mulch all around the playground at the nature alley. Then we tore out McDonald's play area there, the fence lines. And then one bad thing is, we got a leak in the pool.
Big leak?
I don't know. They're coming next week to check it.
Okay.
It's annual.
Yeah.
Scoop-a-diver comes in.
And when it, and where it happens, it's going to leak.
Yeah.
It's amazing. I washed them last year, or maybe two years ago.
Yeah, it's Kubba died.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Kubba.
Kubba died.
Kubba died.
So, yeah.
Have you called anybody to look at it?
Huh?
Have you called anybody to find out where it's at, or?
No, that's what we're waiting on. They're coming next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
American League.
When's the pool bound to close in the middle of August?
Yes, um, August 15th.
So the tendons are still good for the share?
Yeah, except on them cold rainy days.
But you see the pool dropping a lot every day, is that, so the water's cold?
Yeah, I don't see the light.
Kids don't care.
Okay, any questions for Val? Okay, thanks. Fiscal officer, Cheryl.
Okay, you have the current, as of today, fund status, and the cash summary by fund, which shows the whole year, and we're still on the wrong side of the teeter totter. And you have the current revolving loans, and the month of June, mayor's court, which is looking good.
Any question for Cheryl?
And the, we got our first, our one, first installment, there's only two installments of our money for the rescue plan. We got half of it? Yeah, no, it's a rescue plan, not COVID money. And it is, we get half this year, we'll get half next year, and we have to spend it by 2024.
Quick question on the, what was the deadline, or is the deadline on that coronavirus relief fund money?
December 31st of this year.
Do you have that, those dollars earmarked? Just kind of hanging out?
So I don't really know what's going on right now. We're going to have to stock up on masks again or something, but I do have a, you can see on your fund report how much is still left in there. It's a lot.
Yeah, so I was just curious. I wasn't sure if we had.
Like a baseball field.
No.
Funds allocated.
No, it's not. It's all open as long as it's COVID related.
Any other questions for Cheryl?
Have we looked, I brought this up initially, as far as that money, is like business stimulus an option for coronavirus fund?
I have all the paperwork in.
So I'm assuming if we don't spend it, we have to return it, right?
Okay, we're not going to let that happen.
Okay.
Great, so powerful.
Never mind.
Okay, you're done. Okay. Mayor's report, I have nothing to report. And somebody said something?
Well, I guess, I think I can bring up to the general section. Lucas Brown was hired on March 15th. So his probationary period is over on September 15th, and I would like to recommend that we remove him from probation and move him from a grade five laborer to a grade three.
Grade four to three.
Four to three.
And I'll, I'll say, I kind of initiated that with Cory. He's not going anywhere, and I feel like that kid's knocked himself out.
Not literally, but he's, he's a good worker.
He's pretty good on all the departments. He doesn't grumble, he keeps busy.
You haven't ruined him yet.
Yeah.
Wow.
Something with some other departments in the past, I feel, feel bad asking this working by two months.
Why don't we go with Cory's suggestion?
Do I have to recommend it?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. I'll recommend, take Lucas Brown from a five to a three?
Four.
Four to three, okay. I didn't, no, we had five.
So basically waive in a portion of his probation.
I support the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second. Roll call.
Who did the first?
Ron.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Ridgeway?
Certainly, ma'am.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
That was good, Cory.
Yeah, you gotta stay. So, uh, there's somehow an executive session?
I move we go into executive session for possible litigation and?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Personnel, that's people.
You got to be specific, discipline.
Discipline.
All right, yeah. Discipline.
We're going to talk about firing you already?
Wait till executive session.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Pretty brief for him.
He was first and second.
Who made the motion to go?
Charlie seconded.
Ron did.
I made it. Charlie seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Parth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.